This meeting of Norwood City Council was hereby called to order. Please rise with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a Father we congregate on these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Present.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Brayden.
Here.
We have six members present, so we will proceed. We have several requests to amend the agenda. The first is to add the Understanding Committee reports to the Finance Audit and Budget Committee. The second is to add introductory readings of ordinances. That would be ordinance number two in ordinance amending Norwood Codified Ordinance 351.03, prohibited standing or parking places. We also have a request to add under introductory readings of resolutions, a resolution adopting the 2020 tax budget and declaring an emergency. We have an additional communication from Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court fines for May 2019. And it makes sense to move communication number one, the letter from Jim Stith regarding appropriation changes, to be read just before consideration of that appropriations ordinance. So those are the requested amendments. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. So we don't have a report from the Finance Audit and Budget Committee today, so I would move to amend the agenda for the last four items that you said. So basically, all of the items except for the standing committee.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have two sets of minutes, one from May the 14th and one from May the 28th, quite the opposite ends, one six-page, one two-page. Do you want to consider these separately or together? Ms. Stevenson?
I'd like to, thank you, Madam President, I'd like to consider them separately, and I move that we, yeah, I was counting, sorry. Suspend the rules? Nope, so sorry, that's not what I want to say. I move that we consider May 14 first.
Okay, and you just want to make a motion to approve as if read, May 14?
Thank you, yes, that's what I would like to do.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We now have May the 28th set of minutes. Mr. Clark.
Move to approve the minutes of the May 28 meeting as if read.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I did not attend the meeting, I was out of town, so abstain.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes of May 28, 2019, as if read. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Abstain.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Abstain.
By a vote of four in favor, two abstentions, the motion carries. We will now move on to our public hearing, so I will call the public hearing for the 2020 tax budget to order. The copies of the tax budget were available for the last couple of weeks at least, maybe even longer, in both the auditor's office and the clerk of council's office for review, and I'm assuming they were also online, Mr. Stith?
That's correct. They've been published on norwoodauditor.com for the past two and a half weeks.
Thank you. Do you want to give an overview or say anything before we take comments from the public, or would you rather hear from the public first?
I can just quickly make a statement.
Quickly summarize what it is? Thank you.
So, the tax budget has to be passed every year and approved and sent back to the county by the end of July. It is the first step in creating the budget for the following year. It has to be filed with the county, showing how we intend to utilize money from property taxes, as well as other funding sources that come from the county and the state. If we don't file this with them, then we don't get our property taxes and our funding from the state. They want to see that early on in the process that we are beginning a thoughtful appropriation for the following year. Because we're in fiscal emergency and we are under the fiscal emergency plan, the numbers for 2019 and 2020 match that of the fiscal emergency plan. So they match the appropriations for 2019 and the plan for 2020. They have the actual numbers for 2017 and 2018. The first section, pages three through five, is the actual general fund. All the other funds then begin on page seven, as well as a breakdown of the city's debt and bond payments, including those to TIFs, which is exhibit six. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. We will now hear from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the tax budget as online or as presented by the auditor's office? Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the tax budget? Seeing none, is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the tax budget as presented or prepared? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Does council have any comments or questions of the auditor? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you explain what leisure time activities are, because it looks like there's been some big jumps, and with capital outlay, there's been nothing, and then all of a sudden, there's almost $300,000. So could you explain that, please?
Yes. So, leisure time activity increase represents the fact that we used to, prior to fiscal emergency, pay for the recreation department out of a fund, Fund 20, and now it is moved into a department within the general fund. So you'll see a change there. The other part where you're talking about capital outlay, that's a new key that we started using, the 7,600 key. As you know, we've got contractual materials, supplies, fixed expenses, et cetera. Capital outlay is where the state wanted us to start to break down things that we used to pay out of contractual, like the purchase of a vehicle, and put it actually under a separate key as capital outlay. So anything that would be an asset that is depreciated over time, the purchase of a leased car, for example, instead of being under the old contractual key, we now pay that out under the capital outlay key, or capital expenses, which is 7,600. If there is a lease involved in it, if we pay for it over years, then it comes out of under debt, where it's a 7,700 key, where you do interest and principal, but if we're just buying it flat out, it goes under a 7,600 key now. So any of the major projects that would be depreciated over time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Any other questions or comments from council? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one more question. And if you go to Special Assessments on page three, under miscellaneous, we have in 2017 175, in 18 724, and then it goes down to 104. Can you tell me what that all entails?
Trying to see where, so you're on page three?
Special Assessments, page three.
Oh, underneath where it's miscellaneous?
Yes.
Some of that may represent money, if you see that there was a lot in 2018, and then it drops, well, part of what's listed there is revenue that we got for two years as being workers' compensation. You know, the state workers' comp plan had a huge reserve in it, and so they were giving that back in refunds to communities, and so that showed up as miscellaneous revenue in the general fund. And there was a pretty significant amount, I think like 233,000 of it was in 2018, a little less in 2019, but we're not to put that in as part of our financial projections. So you'll see it drop there. Other sources for miscellaneous tend to be like some large refunds that will get in that are affected, and frankly, in that key, probably some of that is represented also as the SAFER grant. When we got that lump sum for the SAFER grant last year, that was 400,000 plus, and so you'll see that, the huge number between the workers' comp and refund and the SAFER grant, you'll see a huge number in 2018 that then drops in 2019 to what our miscellaneous revenue projections are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Any other questions or comments? And I will declare this public hearing closed, and we will move back into regular session of council. We do have one request to address council, but it is not on an agenda item, so we'll deal with it a little bit later on. So I think we're going to move down to introductory readings of ordinances. That is the ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency, but we will read the letter from Mr. Stith first.
Upon receipt of the county settlement sheet, all funds are assigned their first-half property tax income. As a number of these funds are used in the operation of the city's TIFs, Tax Incremental Financing Funds, the Norwood School District is owed a portion of this revenue as prescribed by the current TIF agreements. Due to the complexity and variability of each of these agreements, our procedure is now to have the bond counsel, who prepared the TIF agreements, calculate each school payment owed. In the preparation of the Central Park Fund, it has been calculated that the revenue generated for the schools has greatly surpassed previous years due to an increase in pilot payment in lieu of taxes revenue. For this reason, we are requesting that the appropriations be increased to meet the revenue and the required amount in order to pay the schools their portion. We are verifying the final amounts with bond counsel and obtaining approval of the amounts from the auditor of state, and will present the exhibit A at the council meeting on June 11 after the finance committee meeting. Jim Stith, auditor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark?
Move to receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll now move on to consideration of the ordinance, an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is the ordinance amending Norwood Codified Ordinance Section 351.03, prohibited standing or parking places. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I requested that this ordinance be drawn up, because over the last weekend or so, I had a couple of residents reach out about different parking and traffic issues. One of the residents I had a chance to speak with made me aware that they were receiving conflicting information. If you look, and they did, have a printout from our norwoodpolice.org website, it references a clause that's not actually in our codified ordinances, and that clause speaks to the three-foot provision that is aligned to state code in terms of how far away from a private driveway you need to park unless there are explicit permission. And so this was drawn up to create consistency and aid in just making it safe. Some of our streets are pretty narrow, and this particular resident owns a really nice trailer, and so if people are too close, it makes it really hard to get in and out of the driveway, so that's the reason why this was requested.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. What's your pleasure with the ordinance? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. I'd like to move that we have all three readings, the first in its entirety, that way the public can be aware of what we're looking at in terms of creating standard language.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. While we're looking into this, I know that it came before some of the committees a couple years ago, about three feet from a corner. And I know that there are issues since we now have curved corners. Is there any?
I think it's more than that. I think it's a bigger distance than that, but I'm not certain. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. It is more, it depends on the corner.
Yeah.
For example, you're supposed to park 30 feet from a stop sign, and I think 15 from a crosswalk. I mean, I don't remember specifically, actually, it's in the same section of our code, delineates all those in 751.03, just in different subsections, that you're not allowed to park right on the corner.
I'm pretty sure it's 30, I'm pretty sure it's 30 feet from a stop sign. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I didn't want you to think that it was just three feet.
Okay. Because I know that over in my ward where I have a lot of the Zabu kids, they're right at the corner, and I know sometimes you can get them ticketed, sometimes you can't. And is that something that you would consider clarifying or putting in along with your ordinance?
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilmember Hanahan, for your question. So I'm not going to try and type and talk, but I will say, there are specific measurements for fire hydrants, crosswalks, and intersections that exist today, and part of my response over the weekend was literally to take photos. There is one vehicle that has consistently parked right in the intersection. The first time I was able, I called, and an officer went and found the owner. This time, I just took a picture, I didn't call again, because I knew there had been a conversation before, and when I wrote to the chief about that particular incident, he encouraged that when you see it, report it. So that's any member of our community, even if you're just passing through. If you see someone who's parked too close to an intersection, that's a great hazard for creating an accident, and so if you call non-emergency, the police can likely come out and see it in the moment and address it. So that is not a need to clarify, there is already language around that. The three feet that's being referenced is specific to private driveways, and right now, that is not everywhere in how our code shows up, and so it's created some confusion as to when officers need to take action and when they do not, but overall, it's created a problem for some residents to safely get in and out of their driveway.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Mr. Moore, have you found our code sections?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. It's 351.03, you're not allowed to park within an intersection, within 10 feet of a fire hydrant, on a crosswalk, within 20 feet of a crosswalk at an intersection, within 30 feet of, and upon the approach to any flashing beacon, stop sign, or traffic control device between a safety zone and the adjacent curb, or within 30 feet of points on the curb immediately opposite the end of a safety zone, within 50 feet of a nearest railroad or rail or railroad crossing, within 20 feet of a driveway entrance of a fire station, and those are kind of the distance provisions of the code.
Mrs. Hanahan?
If I may ask a question to Mr. Moore. I didn't hear you say anything from here to a corner, and how do they address corners that are curved?
Mr. Moore?
I think it's...
Because we have a lot of the round corners, and where do they measure from?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not 100% sure exactly where they measure from, off the top of my head. I'm sure that there's a measurement for it, so...
And you said, you did, it is 30 feet from a corner, correct?
From a stop sign.
From a stop sign.
20 feet from a crosswalk.
20 feet from a crosswalk. All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, I would like, I would love to see, because since this was not on the agenda for the public to see ahead of time, I mean, I would be very much open to having two readings today. I would love to at least see maybe just a little bit of time, so if there is any concerns by the public, they can raise those at our next meeting. I just think it might be prudent if we potentially amend it to do two readings, and then we can definitely do the third one at the next meeting, if you're willing to do that.
Ms. Stevenson, it's your motion.
Thank you.
Would you be willing to amend it to just have two readings?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to ask a question to the law department to make sure that, speaking in turn, by considering within three feet, we would actually be aligning what's locally to what is already in place at the state level, is that correct?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. No, actually, it's exactly the opposite. The state code says you can't block a driveway, and in 2002, and again in 2006, Norwood passed specific ordinances to make it three feet from a driveway, and they also added some things about if you own it, you can park a little bit closer, that was the 2006. As part of the recodification, and a big part of the recodification was going through all of the changes in the state traffic code and the state criminal code over the years to reconcile our code with those kinds of changes, there have been a lot of changes in DUI, for example, this apparently was just carried in from the state code, and so we lost what had been in effect in Norwood for over a decade inadvertently, and this would essentially put us back where we were before the recodification.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Moore. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. So in...
Never fails.
So in light of that clarification from the law department, this is an effort to put back on the updated codified ordinances language that was already there. It's not an effort to actually change the ordinance. What was brought to my attention is, depending on where you look, you do see the clause that says within three feet, and since it was not seen in the actual codified ordinances, it was unclear whether or not it was being appropriately applied in the judgment around whether or not there was a parking violation. So my intent is not to make a change, my intent is to highlight consistency, so I do not want to amend my motion.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Is there any other discussion? So the motion on the floor is to suspend the rolls, have all three readings, and the first in its entirety. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
No.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
Sorry, did you say no? By a vote of five to one, the motion fails. We need six votes to suspend rules.
Change to two.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we have the first two readings of the ordinance, the first in its entirety.
And do you want the first in its entirety?
Yeah, oh yeah, the first in its entirety.
Is there a second, Mr. Clark? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
By a vote of six to nothing, the motion carries. Please have two readings, the first in its entirety.
Ordinance amending Norwood Codified Ordinance 351.03, prohibited standing or parking places. Whereas in ordinance 26-2006, council amended section 351.03 of the Norwood Codified Ordinances to generally prohibit parking on a street within three feet of a driveway, and whereas it has come to the attention of council, that section 351.03 was modified in the recent recodification to conform the Norwood Criminal and Traffic Codes to changes in state law since 2006. And whereas the three-foot provision is not part of state law and was removed from Norwood's code, and whereas council desires to include the three-foot limitation, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio, section one, that section 351.03a2, prohibited standing or parking places of the Norwood Codified Ordinances, is hereby amended to provide two, in front of or within three feet of a public or private driveway, if the vehicle being parked is owned by or registered to the owner of the private driveway, then such vehicle can be parked closer than three feet from the driveway as long as the vehicle is not obstructing the driveway. Section two, that all of the rest and remainder of Norwood Codified Ordinance 351.03, not specifically amended by this ordinance, shall remain in full force effect as here to fore enacted. Ordinance amending Norwood Codified Ordinance 351.03, prohibited standing or parking places.
So we will move on to a resolution adopting the 2020 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rolls and have all three readings of the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution adopting 2020 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Resolution adopting 2020 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Resolution adopting 2020 tax budget and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the resolution be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bonzal had to comment.
Sorry about the delay on us. Sorry to say that the tax budget that's here for the general fund, just so people know at home, it reflects the financial recovery plan that council's already passed. So one other note that we did, I noted in finance committee, is that it does mention in the bonds, how we just have one more general fund, bond outstanding. We finished paying that off in 2021, so there's a little bit over $600,000 left to pay after this year, and then by the end of 2021, there will be no more bonds that we have in the general fund. Okay, so kind of exciting, so that, you know, I guess it's not dragging us down any further.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will move on to other requests to address council, and I have one from Laura Chafin, if you want to come forward. If you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
My name's Laura Chafin. I live at 4726 Ridgeway Avenue. I've been in my house for 23 years. It's always been a good neighborhood. My house looks down the dead end of Maple. About five or six years ago, a family moved into the corner house across the street on the corner of Maple, sits on a double lot. In the past year, we have the police on my street. Somebody has called the police at least five times a week, sometimes three and four times[1765.15] Sometimes three and four times a day. Finally, apparently someone got a hold of the landlord and the landlord did agree to evict him. They're supposed to be out by the end of this month or next month. The situation is halfway down the street, the woman that lives in this house that's being evicted, her sister lives down there with her children who are as much of a problem as the people being evicted. And the woman being evicted is moving her family in with her sister. So we're going to continue to have the police come on a regular basis. I know for fact the people who have stood up to them and tried to calm things down have been threatened with gun violence. This isn't acceptable. I understand that there's probably nothing yous can do, but these are, this is rental property. It's section eight housing, which I have nothing against section eight housing. I own my home. These are two of my neighbors that own their homes. We're to the point now where we really don't know what else to do. We call the police so much and I give the police props because they come down and they deal with it and they can usually calm things down for a while, but then things just start right back up again. I don't know what yous could possibly do to help us, but if there's anything you can do to help us as homeowners to try and alleviate this problem, it would be so appreciated because we can't, you know, we don't rent. We can't just pack up and move away from it. I paid my house off a year and a half ago, well, a year and a half ago, right after my husband passed away. So I'm not leaving. I'm not being run out of my house for anybody, but I'm not going to live to where when I hear things get loud outside, I go into my kitchen in the back of my house so that I don't have to worry about being that victim that ended up dead in their living room because of a dispute outside. And I don't know what yous can do to help us, but if there's anything in any way you can do this, we would appreciate this beyond words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Hold on. Thank you. Ms. Chafin? There are some things that can be done. There's disorderly house. There's some, there are some other things that can be done. But can you tell me, when you said they moved down with their sister, are they also renters or do they own their home?
They are also renters. They have not moved yet. They don't have to be out till the end of the month.
Okay.
But they've already let everybody know that they're moving down there. You know what I mean? She said, "You got us evicted, now I'm going to get you evicted." And I just had to laugh at her because I pay my property taxes twice a year. I pay my homeowner's insurance, you can't get me evicted.
Well, if you would leave your contact information with us before you leave, I'm sure there are several of us that will be more than happy to look into it.
I would be more than glad to do that.
Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Chafin, can you be more specific on why you're calling the police on this house? And is there, is it violence? Is it drug activity? Or what kinds of things are happening that are causing you to call the police?
It's screaming, it's violence, it's threats, it's arguments, back and forth, foul language, which, I'm a girl from Madisonville, foul language, don't hurt me. But it's not something that you want to hear in your neighborhood. It's not something that the elderly people in my neighborhood need to hear and tolerate. And nobody should, nobody who goes to work every day and comes home and takes care of their home and takes care of their yard should have to put up with this on a regular basis. And the joke with me and my friends now is, I live in the hood. Because when the police is on your street more than twice a day, you live in the hood. And that's a shame. I shouldn't, I never felt that way. I've lived here for 23 years. I've never felt that way.
Can I follow up?
Absolutely.
Sure. You live in the wood, not the hood. So, anyway, there, so you're doing the right thing. You just have to keep calling. You got them evicted once, so you have to keep calling the police. You have to keep calling every time there's a violation, there's a unruly house, unruly home violation. So if you keep calling, these will be documented and you can get them evicted just the way you did them now. And I realize they're moving down the street, but I think that you're doing the right thing. Keep calling and things will get, will get, there's help. We're here for you, so.
Okay. And if any of yous have any contact with the police on a regular basis, please tell them that the homeowners on Ridgeway Avenue are very appreciative of them. They're doing a great job for what they have to work with because they're working with a lot of problems over there.
Mr. Sanker? Mr. Sanker?
Apologize, but is it on Maple or Ridgeway? In which block?
It's actually in the, what is that?
It's at the dead end part of Maple?
The dead end block of Maple. I think it's 1800 block, yes. My house is on Ridgeway, you know, Maple Dog Legs cross Ridgeway. And the dead end goes down there. Well, my house sits on Ridgeway and it looks directly down the dead end.
Okay.
You know, so I mean, I'm talking where I'm from, Ridgeway, and my problem's on Ridgeway, but the problem is really actually on the dead end of Maple.
On Maple.
That's where the situation is.
Thank you.
And where can I write down my name and number to leave? I can write it on pen.
There's a paper up there?
Just around the back of that, yeah.
Is there still a pen there?
No, but the stone mill let me a pen.
Yeah, if you can leave us your name and your, like, contact information? And if you know the addresses, well, we can get that from you when somebody follows up with you. Say we can maybe get the addresses in question.
I can walk around and get the addresses.
Or if you describe that we can get them, we want to put you in. But we will for sure follow up. Because there, as both Mrs. Hanahan and Mr. Breeden said, there are things that the city can do with the unruly house ordinance. All right.
My cell phone number, my address.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you guys for coming, too. Thanks.
We will move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on what the conversation just happened. I mean, she's certainly not the only one. There's, we've, I've reached out to the Police Department about these in the past. And I know they've done, they respond and they try to patrol extra over there. So looking forward to us trying to see what we can do to get a better resolution for them.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other unfinished business? Following our meeting with all of those ordinances and resolutions that you passed for the Energy District, I attended the, it's called ESID, Energy something District, where, what is it?
Special Improvement.
Yeah, thank you. Energy Special Improvement District. I'm a member of that committee. And so we did meet, I think, the following day or maybe two days after the council meeting. And the gentleman who is doing this project explained that he is investing quite a sum of money into the building that had been the old paint building at the General Motors facility, just so you know where that was. Changing out all of his lighting to LED, getting better equipment that had, that requires less cooling. So they do a lot of hosting and do a lot of internet things. So all of their equipment will be new and he will be making a huge investment, not only to save himself some money on energy costs, but improving the facility over there. And so I expressed council's appreciation for his commitment to Norwood. And he is committed to staying in Norwood. He had previously worked for another company that had been located in Norwood and they moved to Cincinnati. And he was determined that he was going to stay here, so he started his own company and he's still in Norwood. So I express council's appreciation for that. So I just wanted to let you know that that did take place. Is there any other unfinished business? I did want to call a committee of the whole meeting. You all had asked, we need to follow up on the letter from Mr. Stith about the expenditures that were made last summer for the feeding program that we were supposed to look into. So is there a time or a day that's better for anyone for a committee of the whole meeting? Do you want to do it before council meeting or is that when you're having your, is that when you're going to do a Finance Committee?
Yes, we will have a Finance before the next.
Probably not a good day. Does anyone have a preference? I don't know at this point that there's any urgency, but I really want to get this taken care of. A day that's better? Mrs. Hanahan? No?
Anytime's good for me. Until you name one and then I'll say I can't do it. You know how it's going to work.
Okay, let's just say 17th. Monday, the 17th?
Thank you. I was raising, I would like to suggest Wednesday, the 19th. I have a standing commitment on the 17th.
Okay. Um, we can do, what about the 26th? It's a Wednesday. Is that a bad night?
Was the 19th bad? Maybe. Oh, I said, was the 19th bad?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say that.
The 20th, maybe? I don't know. 20th is a Thursday.
Thursdays are difficult. I can do it.
That's a bad, yeah, that's a bad one for...
It's a bad one for you. Want to meet on Friday? Ooh, no, not the 21st, can't do that. 26th, 28th is a Friday or we can move into July.
Wow. Fridays are not good for me.
Okay, what about July the 8th?
I'm going to be out of town, probably flying in that day. I don't know. I'll have to see what time, if you want me there.
Yeah, probably. I think you should.
See what kind of flight gets in on the 8th.
Council's the next night on the 9th.
What about before that council meeting on the...
Please?
Before the council meeting on July 9?
On July 9th, we can do that. July 9th, good for everyone. 6:30. Okay. So we will have a committee of the whole then on July the 9th at 6:30. The, on the agenda is to consider the letter from Mr. Stith regarding the expenditure of funds last summer for the feeding program. Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. So for about six weeks now, I've been meeting with friends and neighbors and residents on and around Warren Avenue about a nuisance property at 5209 Warren. Some nefarious activity, drug abuse, overdoses, drug trafficking, things of that nature. And I would like to announce that our residents are quite happy with some actions that was taken last week. Norwood Police Department came out, made several arrests. Health Department came out and had several violations. And from my understanding, the house is shut down. And the outcome is good for the surrounding, people are happy now that people are out on their porch and enjoying, is what I've been told. So I want to, I would like to send a letter to Chief Kramer and to the Norwood Police Department in their efforts in getting this house shut down and making Warren Avenue and Ward 4 safer for myself and the people that live in there. So it's people like Mr. Kramer and the people that work at the Norwood Police Department that allow us to have a great neighborhood. And I want to make sure that he knows he's appreciated very much by myself and by the people that I represent.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden.
Thank you.
There is hope for you all. Thank you. Good story. Any other new business? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Breeden on his success. It's so nice to be able to do something positive for the residents in the city. We can't give them money, so, we, you know, so it's so nice to be, and congratulations on that. It has to make you feel good.
Thank you.
I would like to schedule a housing, health, and safety meeting with my committee, and I'm hoping they would be available on Monday, the 17th.
What date did that mean?
Next Monday.
Monday, June the 17th. It's next Monday.
6:30. Thank you.
Okay. And your agenda?
I will be calling the clerk with that.
Okay.
It'll be the Building Department fees for one, and I'm not sure, I want to decide how much time other things are going to take before I add them to the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. For the last several months, the residents of Ward 1 have been gathering. And for those who haven't joined us but would like to, the next Ward 1 Community Council meeting is going to be Thursday, June 27th. We always try to meet the fourth Thursday of the month. The last time we were together, it was at the Firehouse, and we were able to see some of the improvements that had been identified as a need in the capital improvement plan. So it was a really neat way for folks to see what we're talking about. Building on the momentum of traveling outside the community center, residents voted. And so our next meeting is actually going to take place at University Station. We're going to gather, it'll be a little bit earlier than normal, around 6:30, and we're going to have dinner together. We're going to have dinner together. We are going to meet at Gold Star Chili and have dinner and hold our meeting there. So if you'd like to join for dinner, come. If you want to eat and then come, that's fine, too. One of the things we're going to be looking at is this development opportunities. The brokerage form for University Station has changed and some of the units are with different companies, it seems. So we're going to talk a little bit about that and other topics as well. So I wanted to announce June 27th, the next Ward 1 Community Council meeting is going to start at Gold Star, if you'd like to join us for dinner. And then by special request of the residents of Ward 1, we will be making a trip to Grater's, which is unveiling a new flavor on June 24th, I believe. So hopefully it'll still be there, whatever their new surprise is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, so there's a group of community members with Alicia Locke and Ian Matthews organizing. But there's a Father's Day event that's going to happen right next to where the Wausau Way is going to enter Norwood. And so it's going to be from 11 to 2 o'clock, right there for the Floral Avenue and Elsmere kind of come together. And they're essentially just going to have like a cookout, they'll have some yard games and stuff like that in that little pocket park there. And they're going to start, for anybody interested, they're going to start with like a little mini parade on the sidewalk kind of thing from the community garden at 10:45. They're all just going to walk there, but the main event's going to be at the, right where the Wausau Way is going to enter. So there's going to have like some information about Wausau Way, some other items, and it should just be a lot of fun, so.
And the date for that?
Father's Day.
Father's Day, Sunday?
Yeah.
So that's the 16th?
16th, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you.
And the other new business? Mr. Breeden?
Yeah, real quick, thank you, Madam President. You guys probably hit on this, I missed the last meeting, so, but I wanted to just mention. I attended the Victory Park celebration a couple of weeks ago. You guys had, it just brung back memories of, you guys remember the, remember when we had the festival at Victory Park, Bear Gardens, I think? It was just, it was just so much fun. I remember when I was a child, used to go to that. It was just, it was a good activity and I just really enjoyed it. I just wanted to mention that. It just brung back memories of hanging out in Victory Park and doing those things a long time ago. So it was really fun. It was really, really nice. So I wanted to mention that. So I wanted to mention that. I'm sure you guys talked about it last meeting. So thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. The Memorial Day celebration was very well attended this year.
Yeah, it was really, really, really neat.
Thank you.
There's one more.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, so sorry, there's one more item. This Saturday is also the monthly Off Pike Market that happens at, on Mills Avenue, right outside Victory Park. So it's going to be the Saturday, the 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You can kind of come anytime there, but they'll have vendors, live music. You can grab a blanket, they say that you can grab a blanket, an ice cream, a snow cone or both, and enjoy the festivities with your family. So it should be a lot of fun. And they're going to do two storytimes with the kiddos, so, at the gazebo. So from, at 11 a.m. and 1 p.m., they'll have storytimes. So you can bring your kids, and they'll read a few stories. And I know when they do storytimes at the community garden, they do those on, every Thursday at 6:00, I think the library, the head of the librarian there kind of curates and picks out some great books every time. So I'm sure they're doing that again. So it's appreciative of the work that they do at the Norwood Library, and glad that we have a local one here. So anyways, I'll see everybody at the Off Pike Market on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to communication. We just have one left, and that is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding court fines for the month of May.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of May 2019. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. So our court fines are up just slightly from where we had projected they are, and so I know there's a lot of residents that are quite frustrated with speeding and other things that happen, and so it does look like the police are making a conscientious effort to do that, to kind of police that. So we definitely appreciate that, just want to express that.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have one absent member. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we excuse the absent member.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzel, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.[1774.82]